Welcome to the January 8, 2018, meeting of the Sammamish City Council. This is a study session. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, or Mrs. Mayor. Miss Mayor.
It's okay.
Sorry. Been a long evening already. My apologies. We are here tonight to assist the council in giving you an opportunity to ask some good questions, receive a good presentation on stormwater code amendments. There's a lot of good information here. So this is an opportunity essentially to delve more deeply into some of the intricacies that council is considering. So we've got staff here. Looks like we've got a few folks in the audience. Jay Reganstrife from Sammamish Plateau Water is here. Steve, do you want to give us an introduction?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. Steve Onishewski, Public Works Director. We do have Jay Reganstrife from Sammamish Plateau. Also, Tony Delzel and Cheryl Paston have been working on this quite diligently, not only in the last few days, weeks, but months, and getting close to years. So I think they did a nice job putting this together to kind of wrap up some of the questions and it's sectioned off. So we'll let them lead us through the presentation, but we'll do questions in chunks along the way, if that's okay.
Yeah.
So maybe make some notes. You have questions. We tried to answer questions as they did come in. So Tony and again Cheryl dedicated a great portion of today to get everything hopefully knitted together. We did meet with the district, which they'll share some information, not only Sammamish Plateau, but northeast Sammamish sewer and water today, too. So I think with that said, we kick it off and go down the pipe.
Great, thanks.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Deputy Mayor. I'm Tony Delzel, Stormwater Program Manager, and beside me is Cheryl Paston, Deputy Director. This evening, we're going to be continuing our conversation on the stormwater code amendments. And I'll say an apology in advance, there are some slides that you might find familiar, at least the returning council members, on this. We tried to summarize the comments, as Steve has mentioned throughout the presentation, and so we'll be adding some new information that you may have not heard previously. The agenda includes a description of the project timeline and background, a review of the public process, and then our summaries and recommendations of some key proposed amendments. So the timeline included adoption of the stormwater regulations specific to the Inglewood Historic Platte area in 2014 and 2015. This started as an emergency ordinance and continued through adoption in 2015. In 2016, staff worked diligently with Planning Commission and the city council to adopt required stormwater code amendments to our drainage manual. We adopted the 2016 King County Surface Water Design Manual. And we also adopted codes for low-impact development throughout the city. We did this in order to meet a deadline for our NPDS permit, and city council asked us to take a look at the stormwater code amendments again, to make sure we got it right. They also asked us to take a look at and review the Inglewood Historic Platte, which we did not make any revisions to in the 2016 stormwater code update. So in May of 2017, we relooked at the code and received public input. We came to the Planning Commission in September and October of 2017, and we developed some recommendations that we were bringing forward to the city council, which started in November and continuing to this date.
Do the new members, do they understand what the Inglewood restrictions are or was? You're familiar? Yes, maybe you can kind of highlight just kind of what that historical legacy Inglewood was?
Sure. So at that time, there was numerous development going on in the Inglewood Historic Platte area. And this development, because of the existing code at that time, did not require drainage review for new single-family homes that had impervious surfaces of less than 2,000 square feet. So developers were coming in with new SFRs, single-family residences, on vacant lots in Inglewood, just under that threshold at 1,999 square feet. And the city council recognized that these developments, because they were in an area that had historic erosion and flooding issues, needed to have more stringent review, actually more review. So they lowered that threshold from 2,000 square feet of new impervious that triggered drainage review to 500 square feet of new plus replaced impervious surface. They also lowered a threshold for a tightline requirement in the Inglewood Historic Platte area. So previously, the threshold was at 2,000 square feet, and the ordinance, emergency ordinance, and the adopted ordinance lowered that to 500-square-foot threshold. So what that meant was that any new single-family homes, and they really were targeting the new single-family homes, not necessarily the additions. That was where the 500-square-foot threshold came about. So new single-family homes would be subject to both drainage review, and then during that drainage review, they would have to show that there was a tightline available. In 2014 and 15, there was no tightline available in the Inglewood Historic Platte area. The city recently completed a capital improvement project, which provided a tightline for some areas in the Inglewood Historic Platte, primarily north of Inglewood Hill Road. Building in those areas, there is a tightline now for developers to tie into. The portion south of Inglewood Hill Road, there is no tightline system, and the system is still a mixture of ditch and culvert system. Sometimes the ditches are filled, and there is no formal conveyance system in that southern half. So the city did adopt in 2014 and 15 an ordinance that put tighter restrictions on that Inglewood Historic Platte area.
So if somebody wanted to build a house, they had to tightline it to Lake Sammamish out of the Inglewood?
That's right.
And it's basically still to the south of Inglewood Hill?
That's right. And I would say not Lake Sammamish per se, but to the end of the erosion hazard, so that might be the Parkway.
Fair enough.
I'll move on, unless there's any other questions on the Inglewood Historic Platte Just reviewing the public process quickly is, we did have an open house in May of 2017, and we had several meetings with the Planning Commission, public hearings with the Planning Commission, and then we moved into discussions with the city council, starting in November of last year. We do intend to take this ordinance to back to the city council on January 16, next Tuesday, as part of the city council review and possible adoption.
So I thought when I was reading through it, that you went from the 2,000-square-foot threshold to a zero threshold, and now we're proposing to go to the 500-square-foot threshold. Do I have that wrong?
Yeah, that's right. And in my presentation, I'll talk a little bit about, there's some conflicts with what the existing code says. Specifically, the Inglewood area, there's a 500-square-foot threshold, and then in critical drainage areas, there's a zero threshold.
Thanks. And I just wanted to point out, on the council discussions and briefings, all those dates, we haven't discussed all of the code changes at all of those meetings, but we were, some of them we were, some of them we were only discussing a couple of the code amendments. So if anybody wants to go back and look at the tapes, they just be aware that we did not talk about all the ordinance, proposed revisions at all of those meetings.
So the four areas that I'll discuss this evening include the drainage review thresholds, the tightline exemptions in landslide hazard drainage areas, flow control and water quality exemptions in critical drainage areas, and then, lastly, allowable discharges. On the first proposal on drainage review thresholds, the current code indicates that in the Inglewood Historic Platte area, there's a threshold for drainage review of 500 square feet of new plus replaced impervious surface. It also indicates that if you are in a landslide hazard drainage area, so these are areas that drain to landslide hazard areas, that if you're proposing 500 square feet of new impervious surface, then that would trigger drainage review. There's a threshold in the rest of the city of 2,000 square feet. And then, this is what we added at the end of 2016. We defined critical drainage areas as areas that drain to landslide hazard areas, so landslide hazard drainage areas. And we also defined areas that drain to Beaver and Pine Lake as critical drainage areas. And in those areas, the code indicates that any proposal, whether it's a patio gazebo or new SFR, would require drainage review. So as you can see, there are conflicts in the code, because for one, there are landslide hazard drainage areas within Inglewood. Landslide hazard drainage areas are critical drainage areas. So what is that threshold? So the problem is, it's confusing to the public, it's confusing to staff members, and potentially, project permit costs may significantly exceed actual construction costs for smaller So there was a property owner who came to a previous city council meeting, who discussed his desire to replace a portion of his existing driveway, less than 500 square feet. He wanted to add a new bedroom addition for his daughter. Under the Inglewood Platte ordinance, the drainage review would not be required, because he would be proposing less than 500 square feet of new plus replaced impervious surface. But under the critical drainage area code, because he's proposing any size development, his proposal would require drainage review. So these drainage reviews thresholds are in conflict, and our recommendations are to try to address the conflicts. The first is, we would simplify all the drainage review by requiring all projects in critical drainage areas to have a minimum threshold of 500 square feet of new impervious that would trigger drainage review. And then we would also repeal the threshold requirements in the Inglewood Drainage Ordinance.
Tony, we've got a question.
Yep.
The other thing in that regard was, a replacement of a roof was a replacement under the old code, was it not?
It was not, but we provided some clarification for that in...
There was some interpretation that it could have been, okay.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
So this is the end of our discussion on drainage review thresholds. Can I address any questions that the city council might have?
You guys will just press your buttons. It's actually, so just for a housekeeping issue, your buttons are the flat circles behind your...
Oh, sorry.
That's how I see...
You don't see my little green...
Nope. That's your mic is on or off. All right, Councilmember Stewart.
So if I understand this correctly, the real question here is, because I think it makes sense to make it consistent, the real question is, do we want to go to a 500-square-foot threshold, or a zero-square-foot threshold, or some other number, right, and make it consistent?
Yeah, we need consistency.
In a critical drainage area.
Correct, yeah, in the critical drainage areas. So that's really what we're trying to decide, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And was there a recommendation from the Planning Commission on this?
There was, and it's consistent with the staff recommendation of 500 square feet.
I don't see any more questions.
Okay, great.
Okay, the second topic is a tightline exemption. So what does the current code say? In the Inglewood Platte, a tightline is required if development proposes 500 square feet of new or plus replaced impervious surface. And that, the picture on the right of the slide, that's an example of a stormwater tightline. So it's a stormwater pipe, and that's not necessarily the size, it could be any size and even smaller. But that is typically what a tightline would be. It's a pipe that's mounted on the surface of a slope, so you don't dig into the vegetation on the slope and disturb and cause erosion issues. It's anchored in, and it conveys the water from the top of slope to the bottom of slope. So that's what it says in the Inglewood Historic Platte area. In critical drainage areas, a tightline is required, because there are no exemptions from Core Requirement Number One in critical drainage areas. So if you were to propose any amount of impervious surface, one, you would be subject to critical drainage review, and two, because you're subject to review, then you're automatically required to build a tightline regardless of your development proposal. So I would, I will note that this only applies to landslide hazard drainage area, it doesn't apply to areas that drain to Beaver and Pine Lake, because we don't have landslide hazards draining to those areas. Why is this a problem? The current regulations may limit the reasonable use of a legal lot. We talked about this in particular with the previous city council and with the Planning Commission. So the current regulations, whether it's zero or 500 in the Inglewood Historic Platte area, our legal counsel has advised us that that may be too low, that we may be at risk of a lawsuit from a private property owner, who could say, "You are limiting my right to develop my lot or obtain monetary value for my lot because of these stringent requirements." The neighboring properties of these proposed developments may outright deny any type of tightline easement that would be required to build a tightline. So even if a property owner developer wanted to build a tightline, in many cases, they might not be able to, because the down-slope property owner would just outright deny an easement for that tightline. And in many cases, it can't go through public right-of-way, so it has to go through other private property. And then lastly, code requirements should balance the protection of landslide hazard areas with development rights. Our recommendation on this would be that we allow a tightline exemption if specific conditions are met. The first is, if less than 1,000 square feet of new impervious surface, including existing impervious surface added since January 8, 2001, is proposed. So the 1,000-square-foot threshold was a threshold that we thought was a reasonable amount in order to build a small home. So a developer couldn't say that we were restricting their rights to develop their We could in turn say, "It's reasonable for you to build a single-family home with a 1,000-square-foot, a less than 1,000-square-foot footprint." We added the language indicating, "including existing impervious surface added since January 8, 2001." That date is important, because that was when the Indian Species Act was adopted. It's also consistent with other language in our stormwater code for flow control and water quality. Actually, I take that back, not flow control, just water quality. And we added it because there was a comment from a council member that, "Well, what if somebody proposed like what they did in Inglewood, 999 square feet of new impervious surface?" And then the next year, they came back and proposed an additional 500 square feet of new impervious, so they could kind of piecemeal their development together, and that seemed problematic. So with this language, if someone were to propose an impervious footprint of less than 1,000, we would also assess whether they had some existing impervious surface that wasn't mitigated by a tightline added since January 8, 2001. So they couldn't just piecemeal their development together and skirt the code. The second criteria or condition for a tightline exemption includes, an alternate system has to be proposed that would be approved by the Public Works Department, and a geotechnical engineer would have to account for the cumulative impacts to that alternate system under full build-out conditions. And what that would mean would be that the geotechnical engineer would have to do both a quantitative and a qualitative assessment on that slope. So the quantitative assessment would be a model, a slope stability model, that would assess deep-seated landslides that might happen on that landslide hazard area. And they would do that by looking at the underlying soils and the areas that could drain to that slope under full build-out conditions, assuming that everybody who could drain to that slope under the alternate system proposed would maximize their impervious surface.
So Tony, I think we've got, I've got a question, but so does the deputy mayor, so...
You can go first.
So this is, the cumulative impacts is what I emailed about specifically, and this is under full build-out conditions, so we could assume that there is a structure on every available parcel. But what happens as people, you know, the Timberline neighborhood, for example, decides that they want to add additions? How do we really look at those...
I'm sorry, can you repeat that last one? When the neighborhood decides what?
Like, that is in one of these critical drainage areas, like Timberline, decides that they want to add an addition to their home. And what if everybody along there, which is in that critical drainage area, decides... How do we assess what full build-out really is? Are we just saying that there is a structure on the parcel? Or are we looking at the addition of impervious surface if a deck is added, or another driveway, or an addition to the home?
Yeah, I would say full build-out means that you are maximizing the impervious surface on each lot, so you need to be looking at the maximum impervious surface that each lot could potentially develop. And we actually, we have the inverse of that in our code, which is a minimum impervious surface or yard area. I think that's what the code says. So, yeah, I would have that geotechnical engineer assume that every single lot that could drain to that alternate system location, and then the model would indicate that every single lot had this full build-out condition on them. It wouldn't just take into account the existing house. So that's the quantitative for deep-seated landslides, and that's how they would assess that. There's also a qualitative assessment, which would be if the geotechnical engineer thought that a significant erosion would take place as a result of this alternate system. So that is looking at areas that this alternate system might drain to. So the alternate system, I keep saying that, it might be a ditch, it might not be a tightline. So it might be a ditch that they're draining to. Or it could just be overland flow onto a slope. And the geotechnical engineer would take a look, using his professional judgment and approval by the Public Works Department, he would take a look at that slope and say, "It's very well vegetated. The potential for erosion, given the full build-out conditions, is minimal or insignificant." So that's, in my mind, that is what would be assessed when we are looking at cumulative impacts on a proposed alternate system.
Okay. So I guess one of the thoughts that I had as it pertains to this cumulative impact is that there's an encumbrance upon whoever is asking for, or is attempting to add new impervious surface. So they can't get, you know, downhill neighbor doesn't want the tightline running across their property. But the stormwater generated from the additional impervious surface is running downhill into that property as well. Even if there's not an erosion issue, I think, you know, we've seen in other areas of the city, the downhill neighbor gets soggy and soggy. And that's kind of when I'm looking at that cumulative impact. While there may not be a landslide issue, there's still, but I have water in my backyard today that wasn't there before.
And I think that comes under the alternate system that's approved by Public Works. So we know where the issues are, and we can do a better assessment when we do site-specific investigation and review of any development proposal. But so, for example, in the Tamarack area, everybody's familiar with that. Staff also knows that there are issues with directly discharging stormwater onto an adjacent property. So this condition allows staff to make that assessment, that we're not approving this alternate system that you're proposing. There's, you brought up Timberline. There's an area in Timberline that has an incised or erosion channel in it that Public Works Maintenance and staff know very well about, because that incised channel goes to a catch basin that we vector pretty regularly. So we know that any development in that area that might go to that incised channel, we would say, "No, this is not the alternate system that we can approve."
All right, I want to get to some of these questions. We've got Deputy Mayor Honish.
So that was one of my questions. The second question I had is, you mentioned on the slide before, I think, that we need to balance the lot owner's ability, development rights, with the protection of the landslide. So the question I have is, if we balance this and give the ability to develop, and there is a landslide, who's liable? And this is a legal question, I understand that. But my hunch is, it'd probably be the city, and it kind of goes to the alternate, too. Would the geotech be on the hook if they say it's okay, and then there's a landslide? Would they be bonded and insured?
They are bonded and insured, just as the city is. So if a landslide occurs, lawsuits are going to happen left, right, up, and down, and they're going to happen to pretty much anybody who was involved in approval of a project. So I can't speak to liability, that would be up to the courts, really.
But it's an exposure, and that's kind of gets, and I'll just put it out there, when we balance that, even though we may be limiting the development rights, if that is on balance better than taking a risk of a landslide, I balance on, let's limit the development rights.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so where are all of these that you just described? You did a great job of describing what the alternate system would have to include. We talked about what full build-out means. Where is all of that documented? And I ask that for a couple of reasons. One, if I were someone who wanted to come and develop, and I had to go do all this stuff, where do I find out what it is I have to do, and what that alternate system, you know, what those studies have to do, and to make sure that we have a documented, repeatable process?
Yeah, it's generally required in the amendments that we've made to the Sammamish Addendum. However, what I discuss about quantitative and qualitative assessments, that is not documented anywhere specifically. That is something that staff need to develop as the proposal goes forward.
Same thing with defining what full build-out means, right?
Correct.
Does it just mean a structure on every lot, or does it actually mean the maximum amount of impervious surface on every lot? So I think that that's really important, that we know that this is going to be documented somewhere, whatever we decide to approve.
Okay. Councilmember Ross?
On the next slide? Is that an "and" statement, just to be clear? The exemption, less than 1,000 feet, "and" alternate system approved?
Or.
I'm sorry, yes, it is.
No, it's "and."
It is an "and." And on the prior slide, one of the problems you're trying to solve is that downstream or neighboring property owners may deny an easement. Therefore, if it's over 1,000 square feet, you still have that problem?
Yes, you do.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I don't have any more questions up here.
Okay, great. Moving on to the second topic, or third topic, flow control, water quality exemptions in critical drainage areas. The current code indicates that formal flow control and... The current code indicates that formal flow control and water quality facilities are required with no exemptions in critical drainage areas. So again, these are areas that drain to landslide hazard areas, or drain to Beaver or Pine Lake. So why is this a problem? So large detention and water quality facilities are sometimes difficult to cite on small, single-family residential lots, especially those where you've got some existing structures and you're proposing to add an addition. Excavation might also be difficult, and it might create some unintended consequences. For example, removal of additional trees where you may not meet the requirements for tree preservation that we have in our code. And we might find that there is additional erosion that might take place during the We also are finding that property owners may not maintain these systems that are built on, in their backyards, per se. They're sometimes costly to maintain, because you have to hire a vector company, not just every five years, but likely every year or every other year, to vector out the sediment in these systems. Or if it's a water quality facility, you'd have to change out cartridges or different media on a more frequent basis. And lastly, they will likely require some additional city resources in order to inspect them on an annual basis, if we continue to require them. So here's an example. There's a lot located in an area that drains to Beaver Lake in a critical drainage area. The drainage review is required if they're proposing 500 square feet or more of new impervious surface. And this is under our recommended proposed threshold of 500 square feet. So for this lot, best management practices and low-impact development must be implemented. So core requirement number nine, which is our requirement for implementing low-impact development, like rain gardens, like dispersing, or other types of infiltration, those are still required under core requirement nine with no exemptions. So a house less than 5,000 square feet of new replaced impervious surface can be built without the added problems that might result from having to put in a flow control or water quality facility. I will remind the city council, the returning city council, and then just to let the new city council know a little bit about low-impact development. It was put in place last year as a requirement of our NPDS permit. And we made significant revisions to our stormwater manual and our city code to require low-impact development everywhere in the city for every development. And really what it does is, it addresses stormwater volumes that might occur as a result of new impervious surfaces. It tries to mimic the natural movement of stormwater from the sky to the ground, to the soil, to the groundwater, and then potentially to our streams as base flow. So it's something that addresses flow control in a different way, and it also addresses water quality in a different way, as opposed to a more formal facility. It includes things, as I've mentioned, like dispersing onto a vegetated slope, or building in pervious pavements as the photo indicates, or bioretention rain garden systems.
Toni, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
So I've pulled up the map, and I'm looking at it. It was back, I think, a slide or two ago, and I'm just putting this out there for food for thought. I struggle with lumping critical drainage areas. We have Beaver Lake and the Pine Lake Protection Area lumped in together with the critical drainage areas, with the landslide hazard drainage area. And I guess I struggle with that a little bit, because, you know, building on Pine Lake, which is, you know, one of our sensitive lakes, is very different, because it's flat. Whereas, you know, putting in a stormwater pond there and removing trees seems completely counterintuitive to me. But it's a very different story when you're talking about a slope. And I'm wondering if it makes sense, and I'm not trying to completely dissect this entire thing, but I struggle with lumping them all together, and I don't understand why they're not separated.
So in your mind, exemptions to flow control and water quality shouldn't be allowed in landslide hazard drainage areas?
No, no, but I'm just, I'm thinking, you gave an example a few slides back that spoke about removing trees to put in a stormwater pond. Well, that seems counterintuitive, but it looks very different on a slope, as opposed to on a flat area, as to tree removal.
I guess I'm not seeing that, because you still have significant tree removals in either.
Well, but you're not looking at like a landslide hazard risk at Beaver Lake. You're looking at a landslide hazard risk.
So you could remove trees without causing a very detrimental impact.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm not suggesting that removing trees for a stormwater retention pond necessarily makes sense. I'm just saying, the two just don't seem like, you know, we're talking about doing one thing on a slope, but it's impacting areas that are flat. And I'm just wondering if they need, if they should be intertwined, or if we should look at them separately.
Yeah. We definitely could look at them separately, but I'm not quite sure we would have different recommendations for the two, if we were to. And I've not heard different suggestions from the city council on how we would.
Separate them.
Yeah, separate them out and provide different conditions.
Let's see, Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, if you can go to the next slide. So one of the things that struck me, or maybe it's the next one, where you talk about if it's greater or less than 5,000 square feet of new or replaced impervious surface. So I guess one thing that strikes me is, is it really about the total square feet of impervious surface? Or is it really about the ratio of impervious surface to pervious surface that is going to affect the flow control, right? The flow of the water? And is that, and should we really just be looking at it as a total amount of impervious surface versus if I have a four-acre lot, and I put, you know, 5,001 square feet of impervious surface, that's not nearly the same as if I do that on a quarter-acre lot, right? So.
Yeah, our code addresses that in a different way. When we say new or replaced impervious surface, we're talking about targeted new and replaced impervious surfaces. So if you were to be able to fully disperse in your four-acre lot most or all of that impervious surface, that would not be added to that 5,000-square-foot threshold. So if you were to, say you had a 6,000-square-foot proposal for a footprint for a home, and if you were to be able to disperse like 2,000 square feet of that on your four-acre lot, then you would only have to address 4,000 square feet of the impervious surface that you're proposing. And under our code, there's a 5,000-square-foot threshold, so you wouldn't have to address that 4,000 square feet.
But I guess that's my point, is that, looking at it just at totals, we should be addressing the, do you have enough pervious surface to deal with the impervious surface that you create? And if not, then you need some sort of flow control. And if you do, then you should be fine. And maybe I'm just kind of looking at it the wrong way, but.
The code does address that through the use of targeted new or replaced impervious surfaces. So it wouldn't be targeted if you could disperse it, if you could, or you could fully infiltrate all of the surfaces. So it does address it in kind of a different way. It looks at targeted surfaces.
But the targeted is that amount that could be naturally dealt with?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But I, I mean, I agree with you that there are many areas in the city that have one-acre-plus homes that, if they can disperse it in a safe manner, then that exempts them from the flow control requirements.
Yep, no more questions.
So, did I go over this slide yet? So our recommendations are that we allow exemptions for flow control and water quality facilities in all critical drainage areas. I'll remind you that these are not automatic exemptions. There are strict requirements in the Surface Water Design Manual, like thresholds for impervious surfaces that they have to meet. So it's not like any development in a critical drainage area does not have to do flow control or water quality. They've got to meet these requirements for the exemptions, just like the tight line exemption. They've got to meet certain thresholds. And then I'll remind you that the low-impact development requirement, it's still required with a zero threshold. So right now, in the Surface Water Design Manual, in other areas of the city, there's a 2,000-square-foot threshold for low-impact development. But what we're saying is that in critical drainage areas, we're not going to allow any exemptions for low-impact development. You're going to have to provide it regardless of the footprint that you're proposing. I'll move on to the last topic, if there are no further questions.
I don't see any questions.
The last topic is allowable discharges in proposed Code Amendment 13.30. So what the code currently says is that we have a list of certain allowed and conditionally allowed discharges. We have a requirement to update this list by February 2nd, 2018, as a condition of our NPDS permit. And why is this a problem? The current list of allowable discharges that we have conflicts with the list that the Department of Ecology has provided to us to meet our NPDS permit requirement. And then we also have a concern from the city council and local water districts about protecting, adequately protecting drinking water aquifers with the code. So continuing on why this is a problem, the code language in red, as the permit proposes, indicates that an allowable discharge would be uncontaminated groundwater infiltration other than wastewater that enters a sewer system. That includes sewer service connections and foundation drains that enters a sewer system from the ground through such means as defective pipes, pipe joints, connections, or manholes. There was a concern in previous council meetings that, kind of the double negative "other than" was kind of confusing for really understanding what this permit language required. We have since had some conversation with the Department of Ecology for what this language actually means. And as it turns out, we have existing code language already that is, that meets the intent of the NPDS permit requirements. And that existing code language is in 3K, and that says uncontaminated groundwater that seeps into or otherwise enters the stormwater conveyance system.
So can you repeat that again?
Yes.
What was the clarification on NPDS that you received from Ecology?
So the clarification was, what the heck does 3C mean? And they said, "Well, it pretty much means what you already have in your existing code, 3K." That they're talking about uncontaminated groundwater, I'll stress uncontaminated, groundwater that might enter into our stormwater conveyance system, because they are the holders of our MS4 permit. So they're really concerned about what enters into our stormwater conveyance systems. And so that's what they meant, is that they would allow groundwater, uncontaminated groundwater to enter into our stormwater conveyance system. And the way that they, and they admitted that the way that 3C is worded in the permit is very poor. And so they've agreed that if we keep the existing code language, which I think was probably better than what the Department of Ecology has proposed, that it would still be consistent and meet the requirements of our NPDS permit.
So you're saying that actually council does not have to adopt the 3C language, and that 3K language exists?
Yeah, and so let me go on with.
I think we would just delete the "other than."
Our recommendation.
Still have the uncontaminat, well, I'll let you go.
So our recommendation is to further clarify the code and repeat what is in 3K. So that's the uncontaminated groundwater that seeps into or otherwise enters the stormwater conveyance system. And then add the specific language that the permit introduces, "through such means as defective pipes, pipe joints, connections, or manholes." And again, we've confirmed this, and it was just this afternoon, so we were unable to share it with the meeting that we had with the water districts. I have late in this afternoon shared it with Jay from Smamish Plateau. But this is a recommendation that we would have for the 13.30 code amendments that we'll be bringing to you on the 16th. Continuing with the recommendations, we did have a meeting with Smamish Plateau Water and Northeast Smamish Sewer and Water just this morning. And we discussed with them what our requirements were for our NPDS permit. We discussed with them some of the existing codes that we have currently in place through our critical areas ordinance on CARAs, which are critical aquifer recharge areas. We discussed with them the groundwater protection requirements that are existing now in our stormwater code. And we discussed with them types of infiltration, types of injection, to try to clarify their concerns. And these are the resolutions or recommendations that we have as a result of that meeting. Is, one, we'll continue to closely coordinate with the local water districts on all development proposals and code amendments. The second is that until 2018, the city work plan includes amending development code, the development code, 21A. And with that, we will look at noticing requirements. We will look at restrictions in the critical aquifer recharge areas, including underground injection control wells. So this is something that is in the planning department's work plan for 2018. So these are some topics that we will discuss with the local water purveyors as we make proposed amendments to the development code. Third recommendation is to require developers to address a checklist that Smamish Plateau has put together for proposed infiltration techniques. So if a developer were to propose infiltration, just like we have checklists throughout other development proposals in the city, there would be a checklist for addressing things that the water district wanted to be addressed when these infiltration facilities are proposed. And we still need to get together with them to work through all of that checklist and see how and where it applies, and what does it mean. But I think it's a starting point for us to immediately implement in terms of trying to address their concerns about water quality protection, groundwater protection. And then the last is to create, or actually, they already are, a stake And then, the last is to create, or actually, they already are a stakeholder in our town center regional stormwater implementation strategy. So, just to reiterate that they, both water districts are stakeholders in that strategy that we will be actively working on in 2018 as part of our work plan.
Tony, we've got a question. Councilmember Velodrama.
I just want to go back to the checklist. So, we're saying there'll be two different checklists that they'll receive, one from the city, one from the water districts. And these would be mutually agreed upon checklist? Or, I'm just trying to think from somebody trying to do it, that you get these two checklists?
Yeah, actually, so...
Are they overlapping or completely separate?
We need to work out some of those details. But we do have a checklist for an application submit. So, some of the items might include sewer and water certificate, availability certificate. That's one of the checklist items that before we deem that a complete application, they have to have that. So, that could be before the sewer and water district provide that certificate, that this developer has to work through their requirements for a infiltration checklist. Alternatively, if they, so they may not know that they're proposing infiltration when they submit an application, but through the process of development review, they propose an infiltration facility, then there's a checklist that reviewers can have in order to say, okay, you've addressed all of these things in this checklist. We also coordinate very well with the water district on development proposals, so they get routed development applications and are able to comment on them. I think one of the outstanding things that was mentioned this morning was that there's a SEPA process as well. So, anything that's not addressed in our development code that may have a significant environmental impact, SEPA, that developers may not have the same SEPA proposal when they come in with actual construction plans. So, their proposal might change from when SEPA was reviewed and approved to when they come in for a construction permit. And that came up this morning as a concern that the SEPA process may not be the way to address things that we don't adequately cover in our code because developers might change their proposal from the time the SEPA is approved to the time they come in for a development plan, construction plan. And that coordination definitely needs to happen better. Planners, if that's happening, planners need to reassess whether a SEPA needs to be reissued if you are significantly changing your development proposal from the approval of SEPA. Yeah, the city needs to ensure that you're meeting all the SEPA conditions, that you're not changing a different type of stormwater proposal from when the city issued SEPA to your development plan set. So, that's something that we'll work on internally with the city to make sure that that does not happen.
One more question. You have water districts. Since we have two districts, there would be an agreed upon between the two water districts for their checklist so that it applies to the whole city?
Yeah, I think that would make it easier for everybody that there wasn't agreed upon checklist.
Okay, thank you.
We've got a couple more questions. Mr. City Mayor, nope.
Actually, that was a point I was going to make.
Councilmember Moran.
I was at the same meeting this morning, and I'd left just a few minutes before it ended, and I'm not sure I was at the same meeting this morning. I came away with the districts were looking at perhaps a memo of understanding between the city and the districts or an inter-local. And the city was talking about perhaps a checklist. So, I'm wanting to throw both of those back out there.
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
So, just adding back to that, after you did depart in the meeting, we did discuss that, and it was Jay who thought if it was able to be handled through ordinances, that an MOU may be moot or maybe less enforceable than an ordinance if we had it on the books. So, I think that's probably a fair assessment of, we went to about 12:15, so we stayed a little longer to kind of wrap up. Again, I think it was the same discussion, same with ordinances, if it could be handled through the proper legislation cleanly, I think that was a good place to be. But you can certainly speak to Jay. They're going to provide hopefully any comments they do have by next Tuesday prior to the meeting we have from the water districts. So, did I miss anything?
No.
Can we get you to step up to the microphone just so it's caught on tape? Thank you.
It's okay. So, there is a, in a previous very preliminary proposal for injection, an injection proposal with a development, we had put together, okay, if somebody's proposing to do injection, what do we want to have our groundwater hydrologist review? What information do we want them to have available to review so that they could make a determination of whether the proposal would be a problem, would be fine, would, you know, would not be a problem, or what might be required? And so, at that time, we'd put together a list of about eight pieces of information associated with a proposal that we would want them to provide us so that our groundwater hydrologists could do a thorough review. And that's when you're talking about the checklist, that's what it is. So, it's not that we would have a separate checklist, but we were, at that juncture, we were providing the information to the city people so that they could provide it to the developer through whatever process. So, one of our goals was to maybe get that a little more formalized than just having us come up with it for a specific proposal, but have it more widespread.
And Jay, could you confirm that really the only difference, the difference between what the city and the districts, at least what I heard and what I left with, is the only difference came down to these deep injection wells?
Well, there's, we have the deeper injection wells, and then we have the infiltration, and we're concerned about both.
Both.
The deep ones certainly more, and it depends where you are in the district and how close you are to our wells. We have deeper wells and shallower wells and different flow directions and different soil types, which is kind of the basis of these items on the list that we wanted to get for any proposals. And so, it was, yeah, anything that's a true injection well is probably going to require a more thorough review than some of the, you know, really shallow ones, especially if they're far away from the wells and in an area that flows away from the wells. But, you know, it's hard to, when you're putting together, what do you want? You want to be broad, and then your review might be very quick on some of them, whereas others would be in-depth.
A question just following up on that. It doesn't sound like there's a difference because from what I understand is for those deeper injection wells, I thought that it required ecology to be involved, yourselves, the city, and health, isn't, so it didn't sound, isn't that the way it was or what it read?
It's not just deep. There can be involved in shallow ones as well. Infiltration galleries can also be subject to the UIC regulations that ecology has.
So, but is there, I didn't hear a difference then, as was the question from Councilmember Moran, was is there a difference between the city and the water district in this?
Not necessarily a difference. I think we want it to go further than it does right now as opposed to, as far as putting together something through an ordinance. We did talk about MOU, ILA, or ordinance. An ordinance because it has, because it's an ordinance.
It has a standing of law as opposed to an MOU or an ILA, which is less enforceable.
Right, thank you, exactly.
So, the other point I thought I'd raise is one of the concerns that the water districts have is that Department of Ecology has not historically been as rigorous in their reviews of these types of situations. So, that's one of the reasons we want to work with the water district or districts and have that checklist so that everybody's on the same page, it's agreeable, whereas we can't really rely on Department of Ecology by themselves to approve a infiltration or injection. Am I stating that correctly?
Deputy Mayor Hornish.
Okay, I'm back over here. Thank you. Can you go back to the proposed language then for 3C? So, you're now proposing that this is, this replaces all of what had been previously proposed?
Yes.
Okay. So, just for everybody's, I don't know if I can get it real quick.
I have.
The lead-in to this section that 3C applies to is, "The following type of discharges shall not be considered prohibited." There's your double negative. And that's why with that other than was a triple negative that kind of really became confusing. But if we adopt this language, how could a developer ever do infiltration or injection? They can't until we do something more under an ordinance or adoption. Is that correct?
So, we have a list of contaminants that are not allowed in the, listed under the first section of 13.30. So, these are all the contaminants that are not allowed in...
I'm not even focused on the contaminants. It's just that the following, which includes 3C, which is as amended, shall not be considered prohibited. Let's say it's allowed, now you use allowable discharges. So, the things that are allowed are these lists of three A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, or whatever it goes to, right? But if we adopt this language that you're proposing, there is no allowable discharge for infiltration or injection. Is that what you are proposing?
That is not what I'm proposing. I think I definitely have to take another look at that code to make sure that it allows us to continue to allow low-impact development techniques like infiltration through the city.
Yeah, because I don't think this language gets to where you want to be, which would allow infiltration and injection, subject to the checklists and agreements with the districts, which is where we're trying to get to substantively, right?
Yeah, it is interesting, though, that if you read through the existing code language for this section, it doesn't talk about groundwater infiltration. It talks about pumped groundwater. It talks about groundwater seeps.
But those are both cases where the water came out of the ground to begin with, not stormed.
Yes, yes.
And so, yeah, the existing code doesn't even mention groundwater infiltration as an acceptable discharge, yet we still allow it, obviously, through our other code. So, yeah, that's something I'll probably have to take another look at to make sure that we are still allowing it through our code. But the allowance, again, would be subject to development code, the CARA restrictions, the groundwater protection requirements for any infiltration, and then anything that we developed when we take a look at it again until 2018 with our development code. But, yeah, I get your point that we need to take a look that we're not making infiltration unacceptable within the city.
Because I don't, actually, looking at this even closer, it just hit me. If you have stormwater conveyance that comes through a defective pipe, that's not going to be uncontaminated.
That generally would be rainwater that...
Going through a manhole would not be uncontaminated.
That generally would be rainwater that falls and goes into the ground and enters into a break in our pipe or a connection, a disjoint.
Which would not be uncontaminated.
Not if it's coming off the street. It would have contaminants in it.
Yeah, and...
I think we need to work on the language. I think I know where you're trying to go, but I'm still not clear at all as to how we incorporate these inputs from the districts by ordinance and by code. It's just not clear in my mind at all. Are we going to put anything in here that if we allow uncontaminated groundwater infiltration and/or injection as delineated by the checklist, but those are going to be, to be developed, right?
Yeah, I think we need something codified here that we can look at if we're going to pass this by the 16th.
So, this, yeah, just so I'm clear that I understand. So, this is talking about water that's already groundwater, not surface water that becomes, I mean, it does become groundwater, but this statement is saying groundwater.
Oh, actually, that's a good point. Fair enough, okay.
That it is allowed to seep into the, our storm system through cracks in the pipe, pipe joints.
Okay, so then I come back to my...
It certainly doesn't say that it's contaminated, so...
That's actually a very good point. I appreciate that. But it still doesn't address, how do we then allow infiltration and injection? There's nothing in our code then that's going to allow infiltration and injection.
There's other parts of our code that does require low-impact development, which is infiltration. For the most part, it's an infiltration method. So, it is required.
But that's going to be really confusing if I'm reading the code and it says, "The following is," let me go back to it again, "the following shall not be considered prohibited." So, if it's not there, that means it's okay?
Now, one suggestion we might take a look at, and we'll review it more before we meet with you next week, but one idea is to take all of three and indicate that it's allowable discharges to our MS4, so our stormwater conveyance system. So, these then would be allowed discharges into our pipe network, not necessarily into the groundwater.
And that would make perfect sense, but I'm not sure all of those exemptions in three, section three really talk about it for the MS4?
Yeah, they don't right now, but that is consistent with our permit. And because our permit deals with what comes into our storm system.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. We'll definitely take another look at that before we come back to you on Tuesday.
Now, we've opened Pandora's box, and I need to better understand what allows injection and how, and how we're going to incorporate with the district side. If it's in a different section of the code, we need to discuss that.
Yeah, the allowance of infiltration, which may not include injection, is in our stormwater design manual under the sections for flow control. So, the infiltration facilities are allowed. It's also under Appendix C of our stormwater design manual, which calls for infiltration, best management practices like by retention, previous pavements, infiltration trenches. And then, we have restrictions on it in our critical areas ordinance, 2018.50.280, which is our, specific to our critical aqua recharge area.
Restrictions, yeah, okay.
Yeah. So, there, there's many sections in our existing code that allow for infiltration. This section in 13.30 is primarily to address illicit discharges, so...
In the MS4 system, okay.
But, yeah, let us take another look at 13.30 just to make sure that by passing the codes that we have or the existing codes that we have, so we don't pass anything, and if we have some existing codes that don't allow us to infiltrate, that might be problematic for our permit. So, allow us to take a look at that before we meet with you next Tuesday.
And then, I still need to better understand how we incorporate the district's input with the checklist and everything and when that would be happening.
So, yeah, the idea is that would happen pretty immediately. That is something that we can implement pretty quickly. A checklist doesn't have to go through a code amendment. It's a checklist that we require for applicants. So, that does not have to go through a code amendment. We can implement that as quickly as we can meet with the district's supplying department.
Council doesn't have to be involved.
It does not. You do not.
Okay. Along those same lines, can you help me understand... Along those same lines, can you help me understand this last bullet? Water districts are a stakeholder. This is, this will be part of that checklist agreement, the ordinance that we adopt that says, for anything with the Town Center Regional Stormwater, we need to discuss with the districts? Is that what we're contemplating here?
So, we are in the planning process of this Regional Stormwater Implementation Strategy. We've got stakeholders involved. So, examples of other stakeholders are our MNO department, the water districts are a stakeholder, the Parks Department is a stakeholder in this. So, all of these different entities, groups, have a say in the ultimate recommendation that we provide to the city council on regional stormwater. So, they're going to be involved in all the preparation meetings that we have with the consultant, to discuss their concerns about what we're proposing. That's a stakeholder. And then, as far as the approval of the strategy, that's going to be presented to the city council for adoption. I'm not quite sure, but it's-
So, the district's input as a stakeholder and requirement will be the checklist, and that'll have to be adopted by ordinance, though, right?
The checklist does not have to be adopted by ordinance.
The concept and the process of having a checklist that must be given to the developer and followed will be by ordinance. Is that what I'm hearing? No.
It does not have to be.
How does it have any teeth? I thought we just said we didn't want to do an MOU or an ILA, because it has no teeth. We're going to do it by ordinance. So, what ordinance are we looking at?
That's the immediate, short-term fix, is to take this checklist and implement it as soon as possible.
What ordinance are we talking about?
The ordinance would be under the development code revisions that we make until in 18.
21A.
Yeah, 21A. So, we'll be looking at noticing requirements, and we're looking at restrictions in the CARA areas. And then this checklist, if we continue to use it, that could also be codified. But, the actual checklist, you know, each thing that the district wants to see addressed, that likely won't be part of the SMC code. Because it could change, and we want that ability to change.
So, how is that better than an ILA?
I think council's looking for some reassurance that our concerns are addressed in code.
My thought is, at this particular point in time, that we do an MOU with the water district as a temporary measure, while we do revisions long-term, that will have its standing in 21A via ordinance. But in the meantime, we can work with the water districts via an MOU.
Well, that'll address one of my concerns, because on the interim period, I was really concerned about, yes.
I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, okay.
And the MOU would address the procedure of the checklist.
Yeah, right, okay. So, then I come back to a question I wanted to ask. What if we don't adopt this by February 2nd? What's the implications? What's the ramifications?
We're new, give us a break.
We're not new, no break.
No breaks, unfortunately.
Just as any permit that a homeowner would receive from the city, you're in violation of your permit, there may be some environmental monetary consequences as a result of it. We may be subject to third-party lawsuits from the many organizations.
There's one in particular, it's called Soundkeepers.
Puget.
Or Puget, Soundkeepers. Thank you. And they actually are following what we're doing currently, and I believe that they have monitored and worked with other cities, or against other cities, as they've gone through. And we would be subject to monetary damages, I believe.
Well, what happens to the MPDS permit, then? I mean-
We're in non-compliance, and we have to file paperwork with the feds that says that.
That's what I really wanted to-
Yes, we turn ourselves in, let them know what's going on.
We do, okay.
What they do after that is up to them.
Pick you up and that sort of thing.
Well, Lyman, honestly, the city manager signs that we will remain in compliance, and he is personally responsible, so.
You have other questions, or still?
I think I do, especially if we do the MOU.
Okay. Councilmember Moran.
First thing I wanted to say, what a fantastic job you guys did in gathering all the information and everything you guys had this morning. You had, you did a great job in gathering everything that you had this morning. It was really good, it was really clear, and you had everything you needed. The only comment I wanted to make was, well, one, I'm sorry I missed the end of the meeting, because I think it's awesome you guys came up with an agreement that worked. But, two, was, and rather than having everything in three and four different areas, is if there wouldn't be some way, in the long term, we could work to have it combined, and have the same thing put in each area, so that we're not looking, you know, in the critical drainage area, we're not looking at all these different areas to, for, you know, for some sort of language. Yeah. That's my only thought on that.
I don't have any more questions. We've got 12 minutes to attempt to wrap this up.
So, I wrote down a couple of things that we are going to be working on in the next week, in order to bring this to the city council again next week. So, and this is only on 13 dot 30, because I haven't heard anything from the city council on the other proposed code amendments. So, these are the things that we will address next week on 13 30, which is the allowable discharges section. So, the first is that we need to clarify that the language that we propose for uncontaminated groundwater, allowed to flow into the stormwater conveyance system, and that whole section, we need to confirm that we're not precluding our ability to provide groundwater infiltration, whether that includes injection or not, but just infiltration as the umbrella. We need to check that, and we will do that by next week. Second is to explain to you how we will move forward with a memorandum of understanding on the checklist, and how we will incorporate changes to the city's code to commemorate or codify that checklist. And, did you write anything others?
I would suggest we make that as part of the memorandum of understanding.
Right.
Next steps.
To do away with the MOU.
Right. So, those were the things I recall from council discussion. Is there anything that I might have missed?
No, I think that was well summarized, but I want to make sure that the full council understands, 13 dot 30 is the section that has to be passed at our January 16 meeting. We did add an additional, well, we didn't add a meeting, but we have a placeholder for the balance of the stormwater code, with the assumption that we are not going to get through all of it. We're focusing on 13 dot 30.
Yeah, my suggestion is, next week, we just basically look at 13 30, which is the critical piece, and then we go back and look at the additional, yeah, the other code amendments that I think are less controversial, but at the same point in time, the council needs to discuss that and understand it.
Okay. Yeah, and if there's any questions in the meantime, on those other code amendments outside of 13, or including 13 dot 30, please provide those to the city manager, and he will forward those on appropriately to us, staff.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'll expedite our conversations in council chambers, and allow us to get out of council meetings early. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so for 13 30, since that's what we have to do next week, I'm assuming as part of this, you're going to send us another draft for us to review before the meeting, so we can see, because the language we talked about is fine, but I'm not sure, I'm completely clear how it all fits together.
It'll be part of our packet.
It will be part of the packet, yes.
Great.
Wonderful.
Any other questions? All right.
I offer my congratulations, that you got us out of here early.
Early, again.
Again.
All right. We are adjourned.